Second call to the IEDC Board of Directors. Have the roll call.
Kessler.
Here.
Kanega.
Here.
Rorden.
Here.
Ewer.
Here.
Binner.
Here.
Harton.
Here.
Crum.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Our next is the invocation and our pastor is being checked now to make sure he's not bringing any gun.
Y'all waiting on me?
Pastor Money Lightner from River of Life Worship Center.
How y'all doing tonight? Praise bow our heads in prayer. Father, thank you for this opportunity to come together to be with these men and women that you've chosen, Lord, and the city has chosen to leave this city. We pray, God, that you would give them wisdom, that you would give them guidance as they make decisions that will affect all of us. We thank you, God, for each and every one in their service. We pray your blessings in their lives and their families and their homes and everything that they do and your blessings upon the city of Hayesville. We give you honor and glory and praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Praise allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The presentation approved minutes, eight minutes of June 26, 2017. Mr. Kessler.
Make a motion we approve the minutes of June 26, 2017.
Second. Post second to approve the minutes, June 26, 2017. Discussion, question.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Kanega.
Yes.
Rorden.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Move to item one, system be heard, A, Friends of the Library, about the citywide garage sale. Ken Bell is here as the executive director of the library.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm appearing, as the mayor said, on behalf of the Friends of the Hayesville Community Library. As you all well know, for the past 36 years, the library friends have conducted a citywide garage sale. Hayesville's garage sale was, in fact, the first in the nation, and it's the oldest continuous annual citywide garage sale. Again this year, the friends are seeking permission to conduct a citywide garage sale, the 37th annual, and to do so on Saturday and Sunday, August 12th and August 13th. The friends would further request that no permits be issued on the day before that Friday, August 11th, to facilitate sales on the days of the citywide garage sale. Thank you.
Have a motion, councilman? Mr. Kessler.
Make a motion we allow the, or allow or not allow any permits to be sold on Friday, the 11th of August, for the citywide garage sale to be had on the 12th and 13th of August.
Second.
Post second to approve the request on the garage sale permits. Discussion, question.
Kessler.
Yes.
Kanega.
Yes.
Rorden.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Thank you very much. I have one additional item. It's my understanding that the library is hoping to host a candidates forum to which we have invited all candidates who are appearing on either the August or the November ballot. It's my understanding that some candidates haven't received the invitation that I sent out to them. I want to let you know that, in fact, anyone who is a candidate during the course of this year is welcome to come to that candidates forum if they so choose. So I hope, I hope that clears that up. It's the 20th of this month at 6:30 PM in the community room at the library.
Thank you. Then move to item D. We have Joseph Dom, who is a unit manager at the KDHE. Mr. Dom.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Joseph Dom. I am the unit chief for the Response Remediation Unit at Kansas Department of Health and Environment. I oversee four programs there, including the Dry Cleaning Remediation Program. Give you a little brief overview of that program. It was enacted in 1995. The industry went before the legislature with this piece of legislation. It was mainly because of the significant sites which were being identified and impacting public water supply systems in cities such as Hayes, Salina, McPherson. The industry realized the effect that this was going to have on both the environment and the dry cleaning industry, and primarily to avoid these sites being placed on the national priority list. There are two parts to this program. We have a pollution prevention portion, and we also have the Dry Cleaning Facility Release Trust Fund. The pollution prevention is registration of the facilities, making sure that there are no more releases of the dry cleaning solvent to the environment. The trust fund is the remediation portion of this legislation. It's funded by a 2.5% gross surcharge on taxes, excuse me, on receipts at the dry cleaner. And it funds the trust fund to where applicants are eligible for up to $5 million in corrective action to the site. Prospective applicants would submit an application to the department. The application reviewed. If it meets the eligibility requirements, it is then accepted into the trust fund and a $5,000 deductible would be paid for that. The state will step in and complete up to $5 million in corrective action. The ranking is based on the risk to various receptors such as groundwater use in the area, surface water, vapor intrusion to homes that are over the groundwater plume, and we priority rank the sites based on those risks. We have two portions of this statute that, one, require us to discourage federal involvement in these dry cleaner sites, and the other side portion is we cannot go looking for these on their own. They have to be found in the course of action, whether that's a property transaction, monitoring at another site, primarily because we already have over 170 sites in the trust fund, but our annual income for this past year was only $870,000. We've done some back in the envelope calculations, and our current liability is over $163 million. So we are stretched very tight on our budget. Reason why I'm here tonight is, one thing we'd like to do is try to streamline the permitting process with the city to gain access to the right of ways to do these investigations. We use contract consultants to do a lot of the work. They're the ones out here operating the drill rigs. They're the ones out here doing the field investigation for us. We work with those engineering consultants to develop the work plans and plan the investigation so we can delineate the nature and extent of contamination. Typically, when we're doing these investigations, we prefer to do all of the field work in one mobilization. It's more cost effective for us. We use field instrumentation and mobile laboratory equipment to run samples in real time. That allows us to track the plume as we're doing the sample collection. That really becomes essential when we are getting into areas where the residences are using domestic or private drinking water wells, because then it's a direct injection pathway that we're really concerned about. The work that we've already done is part of the former American Cleaners, I believe, has been presented to you twice, and we appreciate your consideration and cooperation in allowing us access to these city right of ways. One thing that has come to light recently is there are a few homes in the area that are utilizing private domestic wells, so we're hoping we're going to be able to streamline the process with the city for completion of this investigation and future investigations. We met earlier with Mr. Martinez and Mr. Black. We discussed some of the options that we've used with other cities. Some cities have just a simple dirt cut permit. We pay a permit fee that gives us access to the right of way. They review the work we're doing, and if there's any incidents where we need to come back out, conduct repairs, they know who to contact because they know who did the work in that area. Other cities, we have negotiated site-specific access agreements. Before the work's ready to begin, we would meet with the Public Works Director, whoever would be designated for this task, explain where we're going to be conducting work, what the work's going to be, and then gain their approval on behalf of the city. One other city I gave an example of, we have a general access agreement. We've negotiated the general conditions of the agreement. We just need to provide site-specific details for each investigation. So it helps to narrow down the scope of the task and it, excuse me, helps to speed up that process as we're doing the investigation.
My understanding, I know one reason you're here is because we have been asking for a 10-day type of a notification to the homeowners, and I know that the last time it looked like the plume had moved quicker than what you had thought it was, and it was a time sensitive to truly get in there and check how far that plume had moved at that point.
That is correct.
And again, that was something that really wasn't totally told to the council, because I think if the council would have known that, they probably would have done something on the other line that you're talking about to speed that process up, because we don't want homeowners, the same way, having that plume or a chance of their water being contaminated in some manner. So I think that if the council, probably, and we'll see what the council wants to do, be open to some way to speed that up, whether it's we let the homeowners know before, once you deal with Will and with Tony, but I would sure be open to doing that, because we want to make sure we protect our homeowners out there. With that, I've got a question for Mr. Crum.
My question was, you said earlier that one of the stipulations of it is that you guys don't go out and look for plumes. They have to be found.
During the course of the whole business.
So when, I guess, my question is, how did this one come to light? Or can you say that? And also, I mean, did they just happen to take groundwater testing, or?
I believe this one, and Ken will correct me if I'm wrong, was identified as part of a Phase Two environmental due diligence during a property transaction. With the Superfund law, due diligence is required. Otherwise, you cannot have an innocent landowner claim. So that is the ASTM method for Phase Two property transaction investigations. And I believe that's when they collected the samples, and that's when the contamination was discovered.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So I think in discussion, if we, the council, wants to speed this process up for them, we could, in some way, as a council, give approval for these to Will and to Tony, and then report back to the council as to the ones that they've given approval for with some type of preliminary discussion, and so they know why and where they want to go at this point. So that would be my recommendation, so that we truly can help speed up and reduce their costs by their third party that truly does this all at once for you and not have them come in and out, in and out. Mr. Crum.
Go ahead and make a motion that we allow Will and Tony to work with KDHE and the group that's in here doing the plume to try to come up with an agreement so that they can get into the areas they need to, and at the same time, we can still let our homeowners try to know ahead of time what's going to happen. Not necessarily with the 10-day limitation, but with some sort of notification.
Second.
And add discussion, Mr. Kanega.
Then, am I understanding then that it would be us as the city then that would be letting the homeowners know?
Yeah, I think we could probably quickly do it quicker once they got with Tony and Will to let those homeowners know.
The state would be available to send notification to property owners as well, if that was a stipulation of the agreement.
Yeah, either way, we just know that the 10-day stretches it out quite a ways for you when you want to get this work done quicker from what that plume was moving at this point. Okay. Have a motion and a second to allow Will and Tony to work KDHE to work out a plan for the additional spots that they may need for testing. That's understanding the motion?
Yep.
Okay. Add discussion, question.
Kessler.
Yes.
Kanega.
Yes.
Rorden.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
We appreciate coming in and taking these sites, because again, we wouldn't have known it, and I know you had some monitoring wells. I think it may have kicked up and shown where it is, so we appreciate getting this thing cleaned up. I think it really helps our systems and the groundwater that's there.
Thank you for your consideration, and we look forward to working with the city.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Move to item two, approval license and bond, A, manufactured home park license renewal for Park Avenue Estates, 1400 East Cape. Do I want to approve it? Mr. Crum.
Make a motion that we approve the manufactured home park license renewal for Park Avenue Estates at 1400 East Cape.
Second.
Post second to approve the mobile manufactured home park license renewal for Park Avenue Estates. Question, question.
Kessler.
Yes.
Kanega.
Yes.
Rorden.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Item three, introduction ordinance resolutions, A and ordinance amending section 182.1 of the standard traffic ordinance for cities, Kansas City's addition of 515 regulatory lights traffic code and the purpose to limits of the city of Hayesville, Kansas. With all that said, the change is taking the seatbelt law up to a $30 ticket is what all this means at this point. Mr. Kessler.
Make a motion we approve the ordinance as presented.
Second.
Post second to approve the ordinance as presented. Discussion, question.
Kessler.
Yes.
Kanega.
Yes.
Rorden.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Item B, an ordinance amending section 204 and 211 of the sign code of the city of Hayesville, Kansas. This basically, as you can see, because of the change in the legislature and because of the change of the constitutional part of it, is make, taking the political signs out and making them just like any other temporary sign that may be out there as to what the legislature passed and the constitutionality part of it.
Mr. Crum.
I make a motion we pass an ordinance amending section 204 and 211 of the sign code of the city of Hayesville, Kansas.
Second.
Post second to approve the ordinance as presented. Discussion, Mr. Rorden.
I had a question on this. So if we approve this, are political signs and stuff, we're saying we can put them on the street corners and?
No.
Okay.
Cannot.
That's what I was, I was like, no.
Takes them out and then it puts a time limit as to how long they can be up when they go to come down. And that's all temporary signs.
Right.
Politicals fall in temporary.
Right, okay.
Mr. Kessler.
I was reading through this, I was thinking this was going to go along with House Bill 25, 27, 11. Is that, is that the?
Change in the, and I don't memorize those, but that change in the political signs.
Right, that was the new one that was, that was up, because the House bill says, talks about, I'll just read it real quick, it's only one paragraph. Placement of political signs during the election period. No city or county shall regulate or prohibit the placement or of or the number of political signs on private property or the unpaid right of way of city streets or county roads on private property during the 45-day period prior to the election and to the two-day period following such elections. Cities and counties may regulate the size and the setback distance for placement of signs, thus to not impede sidelines or site distances for safety reasons.
What was the date on that one? Can't get away with that. That was, that was the one that passed last year, and that we, there was a constitution, constitutionality question about it. And this year, we actually went, the legislature went back in and we got rid of that one and let it go back like it is, where the cities actually get to determine where they want the signs to go.
This is, in the memo from Rose, talks about, very first paragraph, Kansas Legislature addressed issues concerning political signs. Couple times, and recently passed another bill, which is this one I just read.
The one, the, it goes back to where cities regulated, and that started, I believe, it was when the Journal came out July 1st. So July 1st, the law changed back to where cities get to regulate where you can put your political signs, and you can't put them, so you just can't put them up wherever you want. You've got to follow the code. So it went, it was that way before July for a year, and now we've changed it back so that they can't just randomly put them out there, and they've got to get them picked up. Before, they didn't even really have to get them picked up.
Because with removing this, I just see in our ordinance as far as you can put it out 45 days ahead of time and remove it two days after.
No, this ordinance says you put them out two weeks before and take them down two days afterward.
Okay, same as a temporary sign with your sign.
Yes, because they are our temporarys, as long as they meet the requirement of the temporarys.
They got to be like four feet off the curb and?
And it's my fault I put the wrong state statute in there.
Okay, that's one I looked up, so that's, okay, so it's going from 45 days to two weeks?
And two days, take down two days, as in temporary signs.
Are there discussions? Do we have a motion and a second? Question.
Kessler.
Yes.
Kanega.
Yes.
Rorden.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Item four, notice and communication, A, government body announcements. I have one. I would like to put the council know and thank Kelsey. I don't know if everyone remembers who Kelsey is. That's our assistant, Greg Recker. Kelsey's last day was last Friday. She was been with us as a rec assistant from November 5th to the, oh five, to the May of '07. Went on up as a coordinator in February of '08, program coordinator, and then went into as a community wellness service in March, the 2nd of '14. She, her last day was last Friday, and we want to let Kelsey know that she will be missed, and Georgie will be, have to work double time at this. Kelsey know that. Mr. Crum.
Stuff going on at the library. The 13th will be the next Lego Club meeting, next movie night. There's one going on right now. It looks like the next movie night's just in a week, though, July 17th, so the council could go to that one, because it's not the same night as the meeting.
What's a movie?
It's not listed on my sheets. I can't tell you what.
We can't list it. It has to be in the library, unfortunate, though. It's a condition of our licensing.
Can you physically tell us?
I'm, uh, I don't know.
Guess he got out of that one.
Then the 20th at 6:30 is the candidate forum that Ken already told us about. There's a red cross blood drive there on the 22nd, and on the 26th, there's a mad science performance at 10 o'clock in the morning that would probably be really good. Then early voting for the primary will be July 27th and 28th from 12 to 7. So that's what's going on at the library. And then I also wanted to mention, about a month ago, a couple of kids from the business department at campus won a national championship. I think it was in programming or something. This past week, Campus High School's FCC LA group, their memberships won a national championship in Nashville, Tennessee this year. And that just happened this week, and I think it's something that we should be, that we need to make sure we recognize. We've got some, we've got some programs in our schools that are winning national championships, and I think that that says a lot about our school district and the citizens and the kids we have here. That's a laugh.
Ms. Jordan.
Yes, I have some news from the senior center. Tomorrow afternoon at 1:00 PM, which is Tuesday, you can go, which is July the 11th, you can come to our advisory board meeting. It's really a lot of fun if you want to come and join us, tongue in cheek. July 12th is at 11:30. You can come and share a salad, and everyone is invited. If you'd like to come, just bring a salad and have fun doing that. On the 14th, there's a birthday dinner at 5:30 PM. It's this Friday, to be exact. They're serving chicken, fried chicken, and it's a $3 charge. You bring a covered dish to serve about six to eight people, and this time, there'll be no entertainment. You just, following the meal, you'll just visit with all your friends and make new friends. The 17th is the ice cream social, and everything will be provided. Since it's hot outside, you'll just come inside and enjoy it. There's no charge for that. On July 19th, I'm sorry, it goes on, is July 19th, they're going to have Christmas Bingo, and the theme will be Christmas games, so come and join in for that. And on the 22nd will be, it's a Saturday, they're having family and friends senior dinner at 8:30 AM. The time has changed, and that is $4 a person, and you need to sign up prior to, and that's on the head.
We have very active centers, seniors.
We do, and there's a lot of seniors that are active on.
With that, no I see no our announcements. We've got a little B, letter from KDHE regarding our wastewater treatment plant. It's quite a long letter, but I'm going to read one sentence out of it. It says, "The SCDO letter notes there were no issues or deficiencies, and indicate the city staff should be commended on the excellent operation and maintenance of the Hayesville wastewater treatment facility." Now, again, as they said, our staff does a great job over there in that wastewater treatment facility. That will move to item C, is amendment to the council regarding the ice cream vendor license for somebody across the treatment. We go to item five, other business, we have nothing. Item six, full business, and other business. Other business is a presentation of the 2016 audit report.
So the individual who's presenting is not here. I've sent emails to him and to the person who did the field work, so I'll see what's, what happened.
Well, we'll just skip that one. Well, move to kid Zach up there. Where is Zach? Oh, he's back in the back, he backed around pictures. Hey, Zach. We have the quarter economic development update.
It's your turn.
Hey.
The multimedia specialist job is available, and it's on hrepartners.com if anybody would like to apply. Good evening, the mayor council. You have before you the economic development report for the second quarter. Really key takeaways, went to IEDC in Little Rock, took a lot from there, lots to process, and then try to apply on a much larger scale down to a smaller scale towards our size, but definitely a lot of input and a lot of insight and some leads to follow up with moving forward. New businesses, we have the three new businesses. Our new housing starts are really on par for what we were at last year. Last year, we had 19 total new housing starts, and we're right at 10. Plus, I believe we'll have some duplexes starting here shortly, so numbers are looking good there. Continuing on with that with our new resident survey, I think it's nice to highlight that comparative to the second quarter in 2016, we had 72 new water services turned on, and that's up 33%. And we finally tipped the scale on the renters versus home buyers. We're finally in that kind of above 40% on home buyers. It's usually more of a 70-30 mix, so definitely great takeaways from that. Again, you can see the responses, verbal responses. Our HFI marketing campaign, our keyword searches, I don't know if you're familiar with our animated shorts, the 15-second shorts. HFI had one made for the, what did it say, the winter, the winter and early springtime, so we had one for all, all seasons. We have four, four different shorts that we'll be running. We're running them on different websites. I've given you the top five views that came across through YouTube banner ads and keyword searches, but obviously, you see Fox News, yahoo.com, kansas.com, which is the Wichita Eagle, weather.com, and play.google.com. We have our, our typical city of Hayesville marketing campaign that we've continued to do on group council approval with our keyword searches, banner ads. do on group council approval with our keyword searches, banner ads, similar to what HFI is doing. We're doing something similar, just, just a little different. We've got that with our lots for sale. The other thing that we've done is partner with, partner with the school district for a grant with, through KPTS. We'll be able to film, get good prices on production value for some of our events, whether it be Fall Fest, Historic Rendezvous, things of that nature, as well as just our, they came in last week to get some pictures. So you'll start seeing Hayesville featured on Channel 8 a lot more. They, I've also dropped off the book, Days Gone By. They're also looking at that to possibly do an actual, no promises, but an actual documentary on Hayesville, 30-minute short. So hopefully something comes from that. But either way, happy to partner with them. Month of May, by Hayesville, we were on par with just about every single one of our events as the year before. I feel we had a little more participation with the Mayoral Bike Ride this year. Again, now, since we, number one was to put sidewalks out on Meridian, but now that that's done, it's kind of a split between the, the survey response, a split between Mabel and Seneca Street, kind of to the floodway to get out to Plagans, with sidewalks along Broadway from 63rd to 71st Street. So just some interesting comments there I've added to it. Again, the Mayoral Bike Ride, just excellent event. Thank you for everybody that came out to that. Our Bicycle Pedestrian Plan passed in 2017. Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee passed in December of 2016. So those are all great steps into hopefully us resubmitting our application in August to become a bicycle-friendly community. Again, the Grow Hayesville Tree Farm was a huge success. Thanks to, big thanks to Public Works, Parks Department especially, continuing to water those trees. We've got 26 new trees that are out to new homeowners, new builds. We had 30-plus trees planted for Arbor Day, HHS Community Service, and then we put some in Pear Tree in Westwood Park as well. So just a, all-around good deal. We still have 350-plus trees, and I'm sure Everett's working off 350 more. So hopefully, hopefully find another farm. But it's, then the Hayesville Showcase. We kind of briefly touched on that at the last council meeting, so I won't spend much time on that. Other than the Hayesville By the Numbers, which was attached in the packet, that's what we gave to the people that came to the Hayesville Showcase. And this week, my, my big drive and push is to get a more elaborate or more extensive Hayesville By the Numbers, and, and also all of our available commercial properties. We're going to send that out, that packet out to all of the people that we invited to the showcase. We invited quite a few on that, and, and then also just the people who were there want the follow-up with the available commercial property and stuff. So the good things coming from that. We also, as many of you know, and spoke with him, Steve Vasallo, he was our, the economic development consultant that you, you had to come in. He did a wonderful job, gave us several recommendations. A digital copy, again, is available upon request. Give me, let me know, and I'll, I'll email you a copy. So I can, got fingers pointing at me now.
I think you should have left everybody.
Okay, would everybody, council, yes? Okay. All right, I will do that. And then I'm, I'm open for any questions or clarification.
Mr. Crum?
Okay.
Zach, on the HFI marketing campaign, can you kind of tell me how that works? I mean, if they go to yahoo.com, is that just one of the ones on the site they can click on, or?
That's where they're coming from on that site. Like, if they have like a video feed going through. A lot of times, that, it could be a banner ad as well, too. I don't have breakdown of it. They've got a really nice detailed report. That was just, that's where the people were coming from or viewing it on that site is where they, the most clicks came from on that, as well as, because we're doing a, a couple of things. We're, we're doing the, the YouTube shorts, like the 15-second commercials, but we're also doing keyword searches and banner ads as well, too. So we're directing traffic to hellohayesville.com and our events calendar.
If I could get a full report that shows even the cities that are, that are clicking on. It's surprising the number of cities that are even, people from those cities that are clicking on. So we've got a full four-page report that we get. We contribute copy and you can see.
I'll just send that with the consultant's report.
It's even got a breakdown of the economic, financial, of the people that are clicking on also.
Yeah, there's like three or four pages.
What I'm curious about is, can people get to those shorts off of our website?
We are, we're, we're, we're trying to figure out where the, the shorts are, but yes, we're trying to put those on our YouTube channel, so that way they will be able to go and view them from YouTube, just, just to view in general, to link in general.
But I think it's like on our website, we've got one for like people that are wanting to look into the, if they could, if those were available on there, and they could...
Yeah, and that, that's something we're, we're taking steps to do, because we're also going to, anything that, like we get done through KPTS, Channel 8, they're also going to give to us, so we can then filter through our websites and YouTube. Yes, that is the, that is the end game.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other questions, council? As Zach had said, this Hayesville Showcase worked out real well. We had it at the Activity Center. I think everyone came in. We had several businesses showed up. So we look for that to be even bigger. And you can see that since then, Zach has booked even three more tours for people to come in and look at the city. So I think it's going to work real well, that showcase.
Yeah, we're going to have to figure out a way to see what the hourly rate is on the big school bus, because that's, because that's what they really want, is just the tour more than anything. I've got a couple Realtors who want to just make that a, get some popcorn, pop some popcorn, and get, fill the bus full of their Realtor team and go tour Hayesville. So, and then I've got another private one that I've got tentatively scheduled with a couple other brokers, so.
Other questions? Thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
We'll move then into department end reports, a administrative services, well. State first, Ken.
Good evening, Mayor Council. August 1st is the primary election, and tomorrow will be the last date of registration for the primary election.
Chief?
Good evening, Mayor Council. All I have this evening is, our visiting officer this evening is Officer Darren Robinson. He's with the patrol section, and he works during the day. So as you're going by out there, say hi to him. He's been here all day, so.
Thanks. Question, Mr. Crum?
Just curious, how well do, does the non-emergency line work? Like, did, how many calls? I'm sure they got tons of calls on fireworks and stuff like that, but do they do a good job getting their lead to us, and so we do what we need to do?
They do any of those, because we always send our ordinances over to them, so they know when the, when the proper time to fire fireworks and things are. So they, they do send us the calls back where people are being out of control, or they're, they're doing things that shouldn't be with fireworks. They do send those back to us. It's, it's a pretty efficient system. I do have numbers that I can bring the next meeting if you want. Just tell any kind of, the numbers that they took up there on the non-emergency line and things like that.
Okay, I was just curious how that worked, because I knew that when we switched over to 9/11 at the county, that at first it didn't work, and then it seems like everything's going good now. I was just curious how this non-emergency line works.
Yeah, they, they do staff that line, and they take, they take care to make sure that they know what all the ordinances are, because obviously they're serving all the communities in Sedgwick County. So they have to go back and look at each individual city and what their ordinances are. And then some of them, only let them shoot the day of, the 4th, and some of them are like us, most of them are like us, that have the whole week. So they have to differentiate between those. But yeah, they do a good job of getting them back to us, the ones that need to come back and have us go over and address an issue.
Okay, thanks.
That works.
Good evening, Mayor Council. I just wanted to write an update on a couple of projects. The West Grand, West Grand Turn Lane, last week, the contractor laid Tensar and Rock. Today, they're pouring to the South Drives for the Tri-City and Hayesville High School. Expect them to finish other driveways on the north side and start laying asphalt. It's moving along quite well. I have been in contact with Sedgwick County in regards to the Meridian Bridge. They placed signs out last Friday about closing the bridge to Jim Weber, and the bridge will be just closed overnight as they put a seal on the concrete decking. They expect that to open up completely tomorrow. Thank you.
Only took five, nine months.
Nine months.
Long enough that they can put a new bridge with a walking path on the set.
Georgie?
Just be glad to drive through it, both lanes.
Good evening, Mayor Council. With school enrollment starting this week, we also did start enrollment for Lasky for the 2017, 2018 school year. So those packets are available at Activity Center. We also have started registration for youth volleyball, that's third through sixth grade. Ball soccer will start next week, that is four-year-olds through sixth grade. And then we will have our grand opening for the Activity Center on Thursday, July 27th at 6:00 PM. I'm hoping all of you can make it to that. My name is in different events, and hoping to have a lot of people come out for us.
The local council.
That's all I have. Thank you.
27th, Thursday, 5/7 and 6.
Move to item number eight appointments. We have none. Item nine, office distances, we heard. They're with a site, Mike Simpson, 328 Alexander Drive, wanting to discuss drone restrictions. Mr. Simpson, come forward and again, restate your name and address for us, if you would, please.
Well, Mike Simpson, I live on Alexander Drive. I, I'm ashamed to say I've lived in Hayesville 39 years, and this is the first meeting I've come to. So that may be good and may not be. Fourth of July, I had planned to take video of the concert, and then later on, possibly the fireworks. I had a pre-planned, pre-planned flight around Riggs Park. I made sure that I didn't fly over any people, you know, where I, I followed all the FAA guidelines. After my first flight, I was surprised to learn from a police officer, very polite, but he told me that the city bans the use, or bans the use of drones in the city. A little surprised to hear that. I know with new technology, we can expect new regulations and new rules to follow, but I think banning the flight, I mean banning responsible drone operators from, from, from their hobby is maybe going a little too far. I don't know why the ban was instituted. I understand you're working on a policy now to somewhat regulate it. I guess my question is, when am I going to be able to fly my drone again in, in the city? And during this policymaking process, are you going to have this open to the public, where maybe we can know what's going on before you cast it in stone and we have to follow the rules? I'm more than willing to, for those of you that don't know what a drone does, what it sees, I understand there are some privacy issues. A drone can't see a whole lot from 100 feet up. And, and I'd be happy to show you in the park one day exactly what a drone, I've got one of the best drones out there for hobbyists. I can show you exactly what it sees, if, if you have any, any worries about privacy. If, if a drone operator follows the FAA guidelines and rules, then it shouldn't be a safety issue. Once again, I planned my flight, pre-programmed, actually. I didn't, after I, after it took off, I didn't have to do anything but watch the camera, you know. So there was no room for, well, there's always room for error, but, so anyway, I'm a little nervous about this, but what, what are your plans? And...
Right now, you can still fly them on public, private property?
Well, that's what the officer told me. I could fly it at, at my house.
Private property.
But, yeah.
Or if one of your neighbors wants to say you can fly your property, my property, so it's all private property, you're talking about public?
Pretty restrictive.
It is.
Yeah, and I'll be happy. I've got y'all's email addresses. I'll, I'll forward you the pictures that I took, and maybe you can see the advantage to being able to fly in public, you know, as long as you follow the rules. It really shows what Hayesville has.
We feel there truly is some good things coming from it. Street repairs, agriculture, all those type of things are there. I think in your, in what you said, is a responsible flyer and a flyer that knows. And that's the question we always have, who's that responsible flyer to protect the public when you may be flying on top of somebody's head out there? So we are working on that one. I think Mr. Binner will get in tomorrow with that part of it. Mr. Binner?
Mr. Simpson, are you, are you an AMA member?
Pardon me?
Are you an AMA member?
I am not.
Academy model aeronautics?
No, I am not.
Because the FAA regulations for safety state that you have to be operating within the safety guidelines of the community-based organization, a recognized community-based organization, a CBO. That's in FAA Part 107.
107, and I've got a copy of that. I haven't seen that.
Yeah, I've, I've been an AMA member for 30 years, and I've been watching this pretty closely. I guess I fly also. But the, the community-based organization is recognized by the FAA as the Academy Model Aeronautics. And those are the safety guidelines that we all have to be operating in, and not, not only drones, but fixed-wing model airplanes as well fell under FAA Part 107. Anything, I believe it's over 250 grams of weight, ready to fly weight. And so when you get, so the real rules and regulations for safety that we have to consider are not only the FAA, because the FAA points to the Academy of Model Aeronautics and their safety guidelines. And that's where you get into flying on private property versus public property. And, and yeah, you're, you're right. Most people tend to think about this in terms of privacy, and tend to think that a drone is capable of all sorts of crazy surveillance things that most of them aren't. And we know that. But you have to have permission to fly on any, on, over any property that's, that's not your own. Public property is generally, for the most part, not allowed in most, most areas of the country.
I'll do a little more research. I have not found that to be true.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, as I said, the FAA is pointing to the community-based organization's safety guidelines. And that, right now, the only one in the United States that's of any pertinence at all is the Academy of Model Aeronautics. And the reason that most people have to be, choose to be a member of that, as far as safety goes, is because when you're a member of the Academy of Model Aeronautics, there's a $2 million liability insurance cost policy that comes along with your membership. And that's why, that's why all fixed-wing model airplane flyers pay the money to be a member every year. Not because we love their magazine, but because if my model goes out of control and flies through somebody's windshield, that after my homeowner's insurance takes effect, there's a $2 million liability insurance policy, which you're going to want if something, God forbid, would happen to your drone. I know how capable they are and how dependable they are. The technology's incredible, but I also know that anything flies, something can go wrong. It can. And so we're, we're still in the process of kind of developing what we want to be in ordinance here in the city. We haven't, we haven't gotten very far with it yet, but I'd encourage you to go look at the Academy of Model Aeronautics and look at that. There's a lot of drone, there's a lot of information about drones and autonomous aerial vehicles, not only quadcopters, but anything that flies that's over eight ounces, that's controlled from the ground, falls under this. And it's gotten a lot of horsepower in the last five years because of drone technology, and because now there's a whole group of hobbyists that are flying these things that 10 years ago, NASA could only afford one. Today, anybody can go down with 300 or 400 bucks to the hobby store and buy something that's just fantastic and incredible. And we understand, they're, they're fun, and they're great, and they're admirable, but they bring along their own set of concerns with it, too. And, and cities just like us, like everybody else, is struggling, trying to, trying to know, how do we regulate this without stepping on people's rights and, and their hobby? I don't want to see the regulation in my hobby either. I've been, I've been doing model aircraft for almost 50 years, but this, drones have, have changed the face of the hobby considerably.
I, I guess my question is, if you're flying responsibly, responsibly and following FAA guidelines that tell you the limits, how you're supposed to fly, why you're not allowed to fly over a public park if, if you're obeying the rules and you're not endangering any, any people, you're not flying over any people. It's a public park. Of course, we all pay our taxes to, you know, to keep it up. And, and I, I don't see anywhere in the FAA guidelines, and I'll, I'll look into this Academy of Model Aeronautics, and I don't see any reference to that. And I don't know some, I don't know the 107 as well as I should. I'm not as prepared here tonight as I should be.
But two, two FAA parts. One of them is for recreational hobbyists like we are. The other one is for commercial usage. And that gets pretty complex. It's a whole different thing if you're, if you're taking video, pictures, surveillance, things like that, and you're doing it on a commercial basis, if you're going to sell it, or you're going to publish it. That's a whole different thing than if you're doing it just for your own enjoyment.
So, so you're saying if, if, if I get my, if I get my 107 license, which I'm studying for, and I fly anywhere... can I fly anywhere I want?
No.
Okay, I'm, I'm asking.
There's still many other restrictions of the city. You still have city restrictions once we come up with those. And, and yes, when we get this to the point, because of the big question that's there, we're gonna want some public input.
Okay.
Yes. Uh, so we'll try and get it out. We don't always get everybody to know what we're doing because not everyone shows up in time to see what we're doing. But, uh, yes, I think it's such a large, uh, item, yes, we're gonna want some public input.
My best advice to you is get on model, uh, modelaircraft.org and join the AMA as soon as you can.
Oh, I will.
There are your friends in this.
I like the idea of that, that $2 million insurance policy. My insurance agent, my insurance agent looked at me a little crooked when I asked him that. Hey, I'd like to get drone insurance.
This doesn't, this doesn't give you a license to go break the law or anything like that, or anyone's laws. But, but when the, when the FAA writes those rules, when you see kind of buried in their information within the safety guidelines, those safety tenants of a community-based organization, that's code word for the AMA, for the Academy of Model Aeronautics. And I can send that to you where the FAA has recognized the name, the AMA, as a community-based organization. They are depending on, on us, model flyers and hobbyists, to police ourselves. We have a very, much larger set of safety guidelines than the FAA does. FAA's guidelines are, actually, they're kind of sketchy and kind of vague. But the AMAs are not, they're very specific.
One last question. I live on Alexander, the back of my property borders on the Big Dish. Is, is the flood control part of the city limits? Am I allowed to fly back there?
You have to talk to flood control people.
Oh, no, but, but as far as the city's regulation, it doesn't cover the flood control.
That is not in our city limits. Uh, you can deal with the county and the flood control people.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Krabbe's got a question for you.
Uh, first off, I'd like to thank you for coming. Mike sent me a couple of pictures that he took and they are really cool. And I'm glad we're gonna try. I, I'd really like to see us try to bring in some people while we're looking at regulations, not for suggestions. And Mike looks like, and then I know the school district, Jason Sapeen, uh, the district's been using him to give updates on, uh, the progress of bond issues and stuff like that. And I think he may be somebody else you might want to tap into because he does say. But, uh, I'm glad to see we're gonna get, uh, public input because it is a big deal. And honestly, I think it's something the city could really take advantage of from a marketing standpoint too. So, that's one other reason I'd rather like us to look at it.
That is brought up on our email, right?
Well, part of it is, I'm not gonna say live how much I've paid for my drone, but we've invested, and my wife's probably watching. But I've invested a lot in my hobby and I hate to see it, you know, restricted too much.
This is a classic case where technology outpaces regulation very easily. The technology is moving so fast and so advanced that no one's regulation can keep up with it. And the FAA mainly, what they're really concerned about is they don't want UME flying our models and getting in the way of a full-scale airplane. That's what their real concern is. And the rest of this stuff, they're actually not very worried about.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it. We're gonna move on unless there's someone else out there that wants to talk to council. Thing number one, we'll move on then to item number ten, exactee station. We have none. Eleven bills be paid, eight bills be paid the first half of July.
I'd like to make a motion that we allow everybody to pay the first half of July.
Second.
Oh, second, pay the first half, tie bills. Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Burton?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
From?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Well, since then agenda, we have nothing. Item thirteen, council concerns. Council concerns, council item concerns, Mr. Krabbe?
The 100th block, Van Arsdale and Stewart, the alley that runs behind there. Last week, a whole bunch of brush ended up back there. And people don't seem to have any idea where it came from. I don't know if there was a utility back there cutting stuff down and then getting it cleaned up. I don't know if somebody cut some stuff and just threw it over the fence, but I guess it's pretty thick back there and wondering if we could get that looked at. First time I've heard of it, though, yeah, we'll get staff back there to do it. You can probably go to 156 Van Arsdale and they'd give you access to the alley.
Other council concerns anywhere? Seeing that, I'll go to item B, council act request update on eight, six, oh, three.
Uh, the following week after the certified letter was sent out, the homeowner didn't get trash service, so they're, been considered complete right now.
And fourteen, adjourned. Mayor and Council, I'll make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Second.
Motion to the second, third, adjourn. Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Burton?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
From?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.